I call this meeting to order at 5:17. Adila, can we have the roll call?
Yes, Pinkard.
Here.
Hernandez.
Here.
Updike.
Here.
Weimer.
Here.
Wilkins.
Here.
Anderson.
Here. I move that the board approve tonight's meeting agenda as presented.
Second.
Pinkard.
I'm sorry, I was looking nothing. I should say that. I move that the board approve tonight's meeting agenda as presented.
Second. Pinkard.
Approved, yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Updike.
Yes.
Weimer.
Yes.
Wilkins.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes. Welcome, everyone. The members of the public are welcome and invited to address the board. During open public meetings, speakers are discouraged from using the public comment period to air specific concerns about staff members, being mindful that the public comment period is not a suitable forum for fact finding or resolution of disputes. Rather, we encourage members of the public who have concerns about specific district employees to follow district communication guidelines found in the student handbook. We have forty-four speakers for public comment, so each speaker will be allowed one minute and thirty seconds. Please remember to state your name and that you have that amount of time to address the board. Speakers may not yield their time to someone else. Please refrain from applause between speakers so we may respectfully allow all speakers an opportunity to be heard. Also note that it is not customary for the board to respond to public comments. The best way to correspond with members of the board is by emailing schoolboard@district65.net.
I'll call the first five people up. Kelly Post, Marla Collins, Annie Roth, Kimberly Hyatt Leonard, Thomas Weber.
Good evening. My name is Kelly Post and I am the president of DEC. DEC acknowledges that the budget crisis is real and difficult decisions will need to be made. We want to reassure the community that your children's well-being and education remain our priority. Thank you.
Starting. Keeping Lincolnwood open is a vote for a longstanding, multi-dimensional school located on a one-of-a-kind property. I make this statement having lived directly across from Lincolnwood for thirty years and as a thirty-year public school teacher. Most importantly, Lincolnwood has provided over a hundred and ten years of continuous public education to a cross-section of our city's children. This consistent track record through Evanston's long history stands on its own as a powerful reason for keeping the school open. Secondly, the school is located halfway between Green Bay Road and Crawford Avenue. This central-east-west location makes Lincolnwood easily adaptable and thus ideally prepared to be at the forefront of northside district student feeder scenarios, both now and in the future. Third, Lincolnwood is directly adjacent to Perkins Woods, part of the Cook County Forest Preserve system. No other school in Evanston has similar proximity to a comparable natural learning lab, a site where students can experience and study firsthand a thriving, accessible, and visitor-friendly wooded prairie ecology. Nature is literally in the student's backyard. Fourth, Lincolnwood is surrounded only by homes and apartments. Streets are residential, so traffic congestion and related safety issues around the school are minimal. Additionally, commercial vehicle presence and density concerns for families are essentially nonexistent.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Annie Roth and I'm a Lincolnwood parent, a daughter of a lifelong District sixty-five teacher. For months now, I've heard board members speak about facts, data, and building trust in the community. Yet here we stand tonight, voting on the one school closure of my beloved Lincolnwood school, the school I went to in the nineties and where I proudly send my two children today. Facts and data are not the first thing that come to mind when I think of Lincolnwood. I think of the picturesque property, school field trips to the woods, learning empathy through interacting with wildlife. However, it's facts, data, and trust that should continue to lead tonight's vote. And if that's what you plan to follow, I ask that you please defend any reasoning behind voting for the closure of Lincolnwood. With the thriving STEP program, projected increased enrollment, messy redistricting boundaries, and legalities of land usage, why would this be your best move? And if you truly believe in the work of SDRP, it's been proven that closing Lincolnwood will not yield the best return. So what it looks like to me is a few board members who didn't get their way potentially making a very wrong decision out of a desperation to close any property they can at this point. As Dr. Turner said at the last meeting, she's a little over this. While we're all more than a little over this, do we let that logic irreversibly close a historic property? And lastly, as lifelong Evanstonians, my husband and I both are in disbelief at the level of divisiveness this has caused our community. Accusations of privilege, racism, pitting north versus south is heartbreaking and something I hope we can heal from. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kimberly Hyatt Leonard. I'm a lifelong Evanston resident, a proud District sixty-five alum, and a Lincolnwood parent of two. Neighborhood schools give kids the stability they depend on. They also provide essential access to programs like STEP that serve historically underserved learners. Removing STEP from its home is a disservice to not only STEP students but to the peers who support them every day. Moving a child is disruptive, we know this, but for children who rely on additional assistance, that disruption is especially profound. These aren't all talking points. They're just daily realities of our kids. When you break their stability, the harm is real and lasting. I'm asking you to give serious focused attention to the long overdue opening of foster. That community deserves a strong thoughtful launch, not chaos, not divided attention. The administration at the last meeting floated the possibility of swing schools for closed buildings without having a clear plan. That erodes trust, especially when those same buildings that you're talking about are potentially slated to be used as schools. So I need to ask you directly. Will you be the one to stand in front of District sixty-five kids who live here, who feel safe here, and tell them at some point that other students can learn in their school but they cannot? Will you tell them their community can be uprooted but their building is still convenient enough to be used when the district needs it? Or our district is not a community? And it's not a backup plan. Our district is a community. It's not a backup plan. We are here because we are invested and we will keep showing up, not to block progress but to protect our children, our programs, and the communities that make District sixty-five strong.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Thomas Weber, a future Willard parent. I'm here tonight to urge the board to use the only publicly defensible method to fill the board vacancy: follow the spring 2025 election results. Board policy provides a way of accumulating resumes, but it provides no criteria for choosing among applicants. The legitimacy of this decision therefore depends on grounding it in something objective and fair. And the clearest standard we have is the will of the voters from seven months ago. The board has taken this approach before. In 2021, when a vacancy opened, the board appointed the runner-up in the prior election. That choice made sense then and it makes sense now. In 2025, turnout was high with over a dozen candidates running, and the fifth-place finisher earned more votes than two current board members have ever received in any election. Selecting someone who never appeared on a ballot would allow six individuals to override the preferences of tens of thousands of residents. Following the 2025 election results is the only responsible path. Any other path will look like politics. Following the will of the voters will look like democracy. Thank you.
Next, we have Andrew Rowland, Matthias Shannon Tam, Billy Garcia, Emily Garcia, Mark Zereski, Lizzie Turkheimer.
Hi, I'm Andrew, proud father of three D sixty-five students. I'm also the graph guy, so I brought more props today.
I move that the board approve tonight's meeting agenda as presented.
Pinkard.
I'm sorry, I was looking nothing. I should say that. I move that the board approve tonight's meeting agenda as presented.
Second.
Pinkard.
Approved, yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Updike.
Yes.
Weimer.
Yes.
Wilkins.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Welcome, everyone. The members of the public are welcome and invited to address the board during open public meetings. Speakers are discouraged from using the public comment period to air specific concerns about staff members, being mindful that the public comment period is not a suitable form for fact finding or resolution of disputes. Rather, we encourage members of the public who have concerns about specific district employees to follow district communication guidelines found in the student handbook. We have forty-four speakers for public comment, so each speaker will be allowed one minute and thirty seconds. Please remember to state your name and that you have that amount of time to address the board. Speakers may not yield their time to someone else. Please refrain from applause between speakers so we may respectfully allow all speakers an opportunity to be heard. Also note that it is not customary for the board to respond to public comments. The best way to correspond with members of the board is by emailing the school board at district65.net.
I'll call the first five people up. Kelly Post, Marla Collins, Annie Roth, Kimberly Hyatt Leonard, Thomas Weber.
Good evening. My name is Kelly Post and I am the president of DEC. DEC acknowledges that the budget crisis is real and difficult decisions will need to be made. We want to reassure the community that your children's well-being and education remain our priority. Thank you.
Starting? Keeping Lincolnwood open is a vote for a longstanding, multi-dimensional school located on a one-of-a-kind property. I make this statement having lived directly across from Lincolnwood for thirty years and as a thirty-year public school teacher. Most importantly, Lincolnwood has provided over a hundred and ten years of continuous public education to a cross-section of our city's children. This consistent track record through Evanston's long history stands on its own as a powerful reason for keeping the school open. Secondly, the school is located halfway between Green Bay Road and Crawford Avenue. This central east-west location makes Lincolnwood easily adaptable and thus ideally prepared to be at the forefront of northside district student feeder scenarios, both now and in the future. Third, Lincolnwood is directly adjacent to Perkins Woods, part of the Cook County Forest Preserve system. No other school in Evanston has similar proximity to a comparable natural learning lab, a site where students can experience and study firsthand a thriving, accessible, and visitor-friendly wooded prairie ecology. Nature is literally in the students' backyard. Fourth, Lincolnwood is surrounded only by homes and apartments. Streets are residential, so traffic congestion and related safety issues around the school are minimal. Additionally, commercial vehicle presence and density concerns for families are essentially non-existent.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Annie Roth and I'm a Lincolnwood parent, a daughter of a lifelong District 65 teacher. For months now, I've heard board members speak about facts, data, and building trust in the community. Yet here we stand tonight, voting on the one school closure of my beloved Lincolnwood school, the school I went to in the nineties and where I proudly send my two children today. Facts and data are not the first thing that come to mind when I think of Lincolnwood. I think of the picturesque property, school field trips to the woods, learning empathy through interacting with wildlife. However, it's facts, data, and trust that should continue to lead tonight's vote. And if that's what you plan to follow, I ask that you please defend any reasoning behind voting for the closure of Lincolnwood. With the thriving STEP program, projected increased enrollment, messy redistricting boundaries, and legalities of land usage, why would this be your best move? And if you truly believe in the work of SDRP, it's been proven that closing Lincolnwood will not yield the best return. So what it looks like to me is a few board members who didn't get their way potentially making a very wrong decision out of a desperation to close any property they can at this point. As Dr. Turner said at the last meeting, she's a little over this. While we're all more than a little over this, do we let that logic irreversibly close a historic property? And lastly, as lifelong Evanstonians, my husband and I both are in disbelief at the level of divisiveness this has caused our community. Accusations of privilege, racism, pitting north versus south is heartbreaking and something I hope we can heal from. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kimberly Hyatt Leonard. I'm a lifelong Evanston resident, a proud District 65 alum, and a Lincolnwood parent of two. Neighborhood schools give kids the stability they depend on. They also provide essential access to programs like STEP that serve historically underserved learners. Removing STEP from its home is a disservice to not only STEP students but to the peers who support them every day. Moving a child is disruptive, we know this, but for children who rely on additional assistance, that disruption is especially profound. These aren't all talking points. They're just daily realities of our kids. When you break their stability, the harm is real and lasting. I'm asking you to give serious focused attention to the long overdue opening of Foster. That community deserves a strong thoughtful launch, not chaos, not divided attention. The administration at the last meeting floated the possibility of swing schools for closed buildings without having a clear plan. That erodes trust, especially when those same buildings that you're talking about are potentially slated to be used as schools. So I need to ask you directly. Will you be the one to stand in front of District 65 kids who live here, who feel safe here, and tell them at some point that other students can learn in their school but they cannot? Will you tell them their community can be uprooted but their building is still convenient enough to be used when the district needs it? Or our district is not a community? And it's not a backup plan. Our district is a community, it's not a backup plan. We are here because we are invested and we will keep showing up, not to block progress but to protect our children, our programs, and the communities that make District 65 strong.
Good evening. My name is Thomas Weber, a future Willard parent. I'm here tonight to urge the board to use the only publicly defensible method to fill the board vacancy: Follow the Spring 2025 election results. Board policy provides a way of accumulating resumes, but it provides no criteria for choosing among applicants. The legitimacy of this decision therefore depends on grounding it in something objective and fair, and the clearest standard we have is the will of the voters from seven months ago. The board has taken this approach before. In 2021, when a vacancy opened, the board appointed the runner-up in the prior election. That choice made sense then, and it makes sense now. In 2025, turnout was high, with over a dozen candidates running, and the fifth-place finisher earned more votes than two current board members have ever received in any election. Selecting someone who never appeared on a ballot would allow six individuals to override the preferences of tens of thousands of residents. Following the 2025 election results is the only responsible path. Any other path will look like politics. Following the will of the voters will look like democracy. Thank you.
Next, we have Andrew Rowland, Matthias, Shannon Tam, Billy Garcia, Emily Garcia, Mark Zarefsky, Lizzie Turkheimer.
Hi, I'm Andrew, proud father of three D-65 students. I'm also the graph guy, so I brought more props today. We've seen this trend before. Families want to live here. They're driving up home prices. ETHS enrollment is also up twenty percent this decade, but D-65 enrollment is down twenty percent. So we need to make D-65 an exciting and academically strong place to be. I would love to get us back to eight thousand students someday soon. The best way to do that is by improving student achievement. So I have a long list here of examples of proven, cost-effective ways to do this. These ideas build confidence, which we really need right now because trust is really at a low. But instead, one extra idea shoehorned into the SDRP scenarios is shrinking the two-way immersion program, an idea that feels arbitrary, unexplained, and completely at odds with both the political climate and the data. You see, Spanish-speaking enrollment is rising even as the rest of enrollment falls precipitously. And so TWE is, on top of that, it's one of the few strong academic draws bringing families to D-65. So you have a chance to build trust tonight. Let's slow down on this whole TWE thing, get real data on real Spanish speakers, and find options that strengthen us. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Matthias. I'm a D-65 parent who immigrated from Argentina and chose Evanston because of its diversity and community values. I'm also the proud parent of that rock star that was here, the third grader on Monday night, Lucia. I want to speak about TWE tonight, and this, by the way, is not anti-Foster or school closings or budget reduction. It is pro-TWE. And the truth is, two plus one is not two. There's enough space at Foster and Willard, and we should and we can continue this thriving program. The reality is that a dual immersion program, as the word states, is not something that should be excluded or segregated. And the real immersion becomes not only from the classroom experiences, it's actually the community and the entire school that benefits and enriches from that TWE program. So here's a question that many of us throughout the meetings and some of the committees that we all participated ask: Why is the administration proposing to close TWE at Willard? Why? We have not gotten the responses. It's not about enrollment, it's not about capacity, it's not about the savings. Nobody showed how much money we would save. So please, I ask the board to raise these questions and clearly state that TWE at Willard would not be closed, even in the no-school scenario.
Good evening. My name is Sharon Tam. I am a Willard parent with a first grader in the two-way immersion program as well. We also have a three-year-old. We are a multiracial family living in the sixth ward. Our girls are bilingual, Spanish, Chinese, and English, and we have worked hard to maintain their multilingual and multicultural identities, which is why we are very disheartened by the unilateral decision to close TWE at Willard in every school closure scenario. This seems to be done without clear explanation or supporting data and without feedback from the TWE community being impacted. We have seen contrary data to suggest there is room and need for TWE at both Foster and Willard. Willard TWE program has helped my daughter normalize speaking Spanish outside of the home, and more importantly, see that she is not the only one. With many impending changes ahead, I urge the board to please take closing Willard TWE out of the current voting scenario. Reassess after a thorough review of updated data based on actual program utilization and do it with engagement from the impacted TWE community. Thank you.
Buenas tardes. Good evening. My first grader, who corrects my English pronunciation and who was shy to speak Spanish because none of the other kids at her preschool did, now confidently chats with her family in Guatemala in Spanish. This is very meaningful to me, but even more significant, it is that she is part of a thriving community of bilingual and bicultural families in our neighborhood school, Willard. I can see that she is proud and comfortable being of a mixed race bilingual and feels firmly a part of the Willard family community. This is not luck or an accident. It is because Willard TWE is an established program at the school and has been able to develop over time and is supported by a group of dedicated and high-performing teachers. I too feel fully a part of the Willard community. And when, just a few weeks ago, I did not feel safe going to pick her up at school because of I's presence, I knew that my fellow community members would take care of my daughter and her friends in my absence. Thank you, District 65, for this very special opportunity for our family. Please give this program at Willard the consideration it fully deserves and remove it from the closure scenarios. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Emily Garcia, and I'm also here to speak in support of TWE at Willard. I am not Latina, but my daughter is. She and our family have been fully accepted and embraced by the Willard community, and this is something I am personally thankful for and don't take lightly. My own elementary school experience was defined by being one of three Jewish kids in my district, and I always felt not fully a part of the community. It affected how I felt about school and how I felt about myself growing up. Thankfully, this has not been the case for my daughter. She has never expressed seeing herself as an outsider because at Willard she is not. There are many other bilingual and bicultural kids just like her. The TWE program at Willard, like many of the other special programs like STEP and ACC, are bright spots. These programs are the district's crown jewels and should be treated as such. They offer the district and our community a very compelling path forward if we are open to exploring it, a path out of falling enrollment and discontent. They offer us a way to rebuild our district's brand as a center for educational excellence and innovation. Uprooting them...
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Mark Zarefsky, and as a Willard TWE parent, I keep coming back to this quote: "We are the only industrialized nation that does not train our students to learn more than one language." Evanston can be the lighthouse district that can show the country that we have the capacity to forge a new path in multiculturalism in our nation. I would like to see IT, referring to TWE, expand across the district. It's a framework that our children need in the 21st century in regards to acknowledging other perspectives and working collaboratively. It's more than necessary to teach our children with a framework that encourages critical thinking and collaborative work. Mr. Hernandez, you said those words in 2017, when the school board unanimously decided to add two TWE strands to the district. Now, with no clear explanation why, you and the rest of this board are voting to reduce the number of TWE strands. What changed? Twenty-four percent of Evanston's elementary school students are in TWE this year. That's something to be proud of. That's being the lighthouse that Mr. Hernandez spoke about in 2017 and that many of our district leaders continue to speak of today. So why are you now turning the back on the TWE community? Why are we reducing TWE strands? Help Evanston continue to be that lighthouse. Please remove TWE programming from any school closure vote. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Lizzie and my job is going to Lincolnwood. I have tons of questions and this is one of them. Why are people saying they want to close two more schools? You're the boss and I'm just a substitute for Gomn Harris. We are your clients and you can't work without us. The STEP program is used to their role models and they can't work without them. Black Girl Magic Book Club is at different schools. If you shut down a school, that can affect Black Girl Magic Book Club, and Black Girl Magic Book Club is important to everyone. We need to lift everyone up. We shouldn't have to make all these meetings and rallies just to make you understand. Why do you want to close Lincolnwood so badly? It just doesn't click. Thank you.
Next, we have Lisa Weiss, Marlo Vic Philippino, or Vic Philippi, Robin Taladur, Colleen Egan, Brad Kennedy, Shaska Dice, Zaki Tazik.
My name is Lisa Weiss. My family moved to Evanston in 1977. I attended Dewey, Nichols, and ETHS. I have two kids in the district now. A land use attorney informed the board that deed restrictions prevent the sale or repurposing of Lincolnwood. The district's assessment failed to address this legal barrier. Closing a school under these circumstances risks litigation, draining resources from our classrooms. We want District 65 to be what ETHS is, a district families choose. We have the teachers. Five were Golden Apple finalists in 2023, but democratic governance is being disregarded. Four board members were elected seven months ago. Some want to hand select the fifth. Other schools got multiple scenarios. Lincolnwood stands alone tonight. Lincolnwood houses STEP, serving students with autism. Instead of moving our children, right-size the administration, lease part of JEH for revenue, celebrate the opening of Foster. Don't close another school through a flawed process that disrupts essential services and wastes money in court. Vote no tonight, then honor the public election results and name a tie-breaking board member. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Marlo Del Persio. I'm a District 65 parent. You say this process has been data-driven, but every meeting has a new scenario of schools to close. You say this process has been data-driven, but when questioned on the data, you don't respond with clarifying data. You respond with silence, or misdirection, or platitudes about the difficulty of the process. You say this process has been data-driven, but now you're voting to close only one school that you can't redevelop and will cost the district money with no benefit to the students. This process has been many things, but it has not been data-driven. You say you're proud of this process, but you're voting to close a whole school with two days' notice at a special meeting at 5:15 when most people aren't even off work. Our district believes in restorative practices. Our students are expected to admit their mistakes, apologize, and work to fix the damage done. How can we expect our children to do that when some of the leadership refuses to model that behavior? Our children deserve better.
My name is Vic Philippi. First, to close Lincolnwood while leaving Kingsley open makes a mockery of your purported goal of walkable neighborhood schools, as Kingsley is at the far eastern edge of the feeder area, not centrally located like Lincolnwood. The district keeps saying that the SDRP is a data-driven process, but the district never even examined the title of the properties in question. With such an obvious gap in your data, I'm shocked that you have not realized that the data-driven process is flawed and requires reexamination. I get the sense that you all feel that the district's financial condition requires bold action. Don't mistake bold action for smart action. Jumping from a plane with a defective parachute is most certainly bold. It is also most certainly not smart. Your paramount challenge right now is a successful opening of Foster. Some of you somehow think that opening Foster, closing Bessie Rhodes, and then closing two more schools is a good idea. But the more plates you juggle, the more likelihood is that they all will fall and break. With such momentous decisions before you, showing wisdom is far more valuable than making ambitious plans. Think about that.
Hi, my name is Robin Tellander, and I serve on the SDRP Facilities Committee. I'm a former special education teacher, a child and family therapist, and a single mom of three, two of whom attend Kingsley, a school and community we deeply love. I believe there's no such thing as someone else's child or someone else's school when we all live in that same city. We've lost sight of that. Our schools are our health and our wealth, which means you hold the most important jobs in Evanston. To whom much power is given, much is required. You haven't heard protests from Kingsley families, not because we don't love our school, but because with the opening of Foster and a shifting of a third of our beloved students, we knew our enrollment would drop and it wouldn't make sense to stay open. But tonight, I'm asking for more thoughtful planning, creative solutions, and a long-term vision. As a committee, we spent countless hours on boundaries and walkability, but we did not spend time on Scenario 1B, which you are voting on tonight. If you approve 1B, please include a caveat to renovate Lincolnwood to serve as a single elementary school in the northwest corner, closing it for a year to renovate, then combining Kingsley and Willard there in '27-'28. I also urge you to consider 1A, with a caveat to renovate Kingsley to give Park School the state-of-the-art building it deserves and/or move JEH there. Park and JEH students are already busts, and Kingsley's location near Green Bay McCormick makes sense. Here's the key point: Either 1A or 1B, done thoughtfully, allows the district to close two buildings over time. A phased approach is a far healthier approach. Indecision is harming everyone. Please make a decision that does not leave us pitted against each other for another year. We're more aligned than you think. Let's move forward together.
Hi, I'm a Fifth Ward resident and a parent of a child who attends Lincolnwood Elementary. I would like to sincerely thank the Willard, Kingsley, Washington, King Arts, and other families for sharing their thoughtful stories of community and inclusivity. While the school board advocates for unity and transparency, it seems, and I want to put an emphasis on "seems," at least one board member is using their position to turn some in our community against Fifth, Sixth, and Seventh Ward schools and families. This contentious behavior only drives us further apart and deepens our mistrust in the school board's supposed objectivity. How can we heal as a whole community when some are actively working to divide us? Separately, everyone must remember that District 65's financial deficit was worsened under the leadership of one sitting board member who has yet to resign. More in the community need to ask that Sergio Hernandez finally do what's in the best interest of D-65 and resign from the school board.
Good evening. My name is Shaska Dice. I'm a District 65 parent, and I also served on this facilities subcommittee. This committee worked for months for now what seems like nothing. Scenario 1A was vetted. Scenarios 2D and 2F in all of their various iterations were reviewed. Scenarios 3B, 3D, 3X painstakingly assessed. 4F reluctantly evaluated. But Scenario 1B was never fully analyzed. Boundaries never examined, feedback not collected, virtually no time was spent on Scenario 1B, and now we are here. So, so much for this process, so much for the data, so much for any of it. If 1A and 1B had been on the agenda Monday, maybe there would be some semblance of propriety left. But now, it just feels like everything is a share. For those who voted no to 1A on Monday but who will vote yes to 1B today, the only transparent thing remaining is how personal politics have ruined this process and decimated what remaining trust I have in you.
Sorry, before you start the clock, can I request a special accommodation under the ADA? I forgot to send you an email about it earlier. I have a stutter, everyone, so I can't speak as fast as most of the people in this room. Well, on some days I can. So we'll see what happens tonight. Thank you so much. I just have a sheet of paper, so it shouldn't be too long. There are a lot of things I could say about Monday's meeting, but I don't want to engage in any personal attacks here, and I'm just sad. I'm sad because there's a rumor now that tonight you all will close Lincolnwood, when that's not the option that anybody wants on the board. The things I'm about to say may not be completely accurate, so check with a lawyer after I speak, please. Okay. On Monday, all six of you voted to close Kingsley. Three of you with a two-school closing, and three of you with a one-school closing. We know the will of the board on that. In terms of deadlines for this, December 1st is not the deadline to shut down a school. Next week is not the deadline, at least not according to any law, you know, statute or regulation that I've seen. So, while I want zero schools to be shut down, there's agreement on Kingsley. You can hold a special meeting next Monday, or the Monday after that, or you can do this at the regular meeting on December 8th. Tonight, vote no. Put Kingsley back on the agenda. Regular business can be conducted at a special meeting. You can look at the district policy manual on that. Again, if you're not sure you're able to do this, check with a lawyer before you cast a vote. Check with the district's lawyer. There's not much trust in the board left. I'm almost done. You can begin to fix that if you vote no tonight. Put Kingsley closing back on the agenda, and then vote unanimously to close it. That's not what I want, but you all agreed that Kingsley should be closed on Monday. That's the will of the board. Thank you so much for your time, and as I said, if you're not sure you can do any of these things, I urge you to consult the district's attorney before you vote. Thank you for your time.
Next, we have Malia Gertsmann, Lindsay White, Dave Stewart, Mike Ball, Louis Skirba, Angelica Williams, Bruce Williams, Chris Van Nystrend, Josie Anno. Oh, I have Malia's first.
Good evening. My name is Malia Gertsmann, and I'm a D65 parent, and I thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. First, because I'm both trained as a lawyer and I work with data a lot myself, and because folks have been talking a lot about both tonight, I just wanted to say a few things. First, in terms of the Akron Community Schools that were cited in a footnote to the INNS proposal, I asked, how did Akron pay to keep its schools, its community schools, open? And I was told, if you want that information, look it up yourself, so I did. Akron committed $800 million to fix its schools. Nearly 60% of that was paid for by the state. The remainder was paid for by an income tax increase voted on by the municipality. In addition, Akron had to close nearly 30% of its schools in order to go ahead with this proposal. So I think it's really important to know, they did not do that without those numbers. Secondly, I'm already taking more time than I meant to. I've also read the assertion that there are deed restrictions on the property. There are, in fact, deed restrictions, but by my reading, there are plenty of options by which that property could still be used for uses other than schools. So to present it as an absolute restriction, I think, is misleading and inaccurate. I'll leave it at that, other than to say I don't think there is any right decision here, and I don't envy any of you your votes.
Hi, I'm Lindsay White. I'm going to repeat my comments that I made five meetings ago. I'm in a position of privilege to be standing here at 5:15 tonight addressing the board. There's parents who work, parents who are at home scared of ICE, parents who don't have childcare to attend a meeting like this, and I'll remind you that you represent those parents, too. This was our first chance at an equity-driven school closure process, and we have failed, all because a loud section of our community didn't like the results when it was their school that was named. What they're not saying is they thought it should be our schools. Closing two schools was the compromise and the direction the board was heading as of two and a half weeks ago. So what changed? You owe the public answers, Pat. Moving forward with no solid financial plan puts everyone at risk. Running away from this doesn't cut $3.67 million from next year's school budget. To Pat, I feel a sense of betrayal from you that may never be resolved. Voting this way means you have left behind black, brown, and low-income students who you claimed to care about during your campaign. If the board ignores all of the data and the consultant recommendations from this long process, only to put our community through it again, it's on you, Pat. You're prioritizing empty buildings over students, students who, that we've said over and over, is the most important thing. Maria, Nicole, and Pat, you should be ashamed.
Hi, good evening. I'm Dave Stewart. I moved here this past summer from Gross Point, Michigan. I've got a 1st, a 4th, a 6th, and an 8th grader in the school district. Where I moved from, they had similar declining attendance in the schools. They had closed Trombley School. When I went to my daughter's elementary school graduation, I heard talk after talk as these young, beautiful students got up and they talked about how hard it was to change schools. They also talked with pride and resilience about getting through it. I am really happy with our local schools. I love it. I would fight to protect it. I think literally all of us would fight to protect our local schools. But budgets are budgets. There's choices that have to be made. I am really grateful to be here when we were trying to find a place to go. A school counselor said I would be happy to have my student go to, my child go to, any school in the district. And I believed her, and I still do. I urge you to know that not making choices is a choice in and of itself, and that there are hard choices to be made. I don't envy the situation that you're in, but I hope that you can act and that we can maintain unity as a community and that we can support the students, particularly those who will end up be redistricting. Thank you.
Hi, Mike Bowle. I'm a parent of three Willard students. I was here on Monday and spoke about the lack of trust, the lack of honesty by members of this board, by some of the administration. And the more I read, the more I hear other people speaking, the less and less and less trust I have. I don't understand some of these decisions that are being made. As somebody said, how do you vote to close Lincolnwood and Kingsley and then turn around and not vote to close Kingsley? I don't understand that decision. I think if, whatever decision you're going to make, you have to really justify this and make it make sense to people, because like somebody was saying before, the whiplash and all the scenarios and things, I think the board at some point needs to put out a statement and say, this is why we did what we did, because it's not making sense.
Hi, I'm Louis Skirba, an Oakton and Shoot parent. When the school closure options dropped in September, I said I couldn't believe the district could handle one additional thing on top of Foster and Bessie Rhodes. Going through these meetings, reading the committee recommendations, reading the alternate plans from the INNS Legion, and even the suss waters of Reddit, made one thing clear. We all agree any scenario, including the default zero-school closure, will cause a lot of work and pain for D65 families. Whether you want zero, one, or two additional school closures, the vote process we saw ensuring the zero-school closure scenario is our most likely fate we are going to require to tell the Illinois State at December 1st. That the legal council stated we had to put the remaining options on the agenda doesn't make sense. The one time you guys tried to vote was on 10/27, and at four hours in, they said you could not vote to limit the options to one in school closures at that time. So, the voting has been a mess, and Lincolnwood may now pay the price, and you guys have to vote on that. So I propose we set another board meeting before the 1st, so we can get through this and try and have a better vote process. None of our holidays and vacations are more important than this vote. Two, have the board jointly and publicly select the scenarios to vote on. Three, randomize the orders, because we don't want any gaming or bias for the last option, playing chicken with a zero default. And four, cancel tonight's vote or all, everyone vote no. This is not about one or two school closures. It's just because this vote doesn't have [bleep] confidence. This is not fair to you, or us, or the district, or Lincolnwood. Thank you.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Angelica Sanchez-Williams. Tengo un hijo en Willard-Tweed, y vivimos en el Distrito 7. Un domingo en octubre caminé a la nueva escuela Foster y me tomó 13 minutos. Y este día empezamos la conversación con nuestro hijo que probablemente irá a Foster. Pero nosotros queremos que Tweed se queda en Willard, pero tengo las siguientes preguntas. ¿Por qué Willard-Tweed no fueron invitados a conocer a la directora Burko? ¿Por qué Tweed fue un solo punto en la presentación? Un día en la vida de un estudiante de Foster, página 19. ¿Por qué no nos informan sobre el currículo de la nueva escuela Foster? Queremos saber más. ¿Por qué Distrito 7 y 6 no recibió una encuesta? Distrito 7 sí la recibió. Es cierto que Willard... ¿Es cierto que Willard-Tweed tiene asientos reservados en Foster? Los hispanos del Distrito 7, 6, y 5 merecemos ser parte de la conversación. Y yo quiero que Willard-Tweed se quede en Willard. Nosotros sí existimos. Good afternoon, members. My name is Angelica Sanchez-Williams. I have a son in Willard-Tweed, and I live in Ward 7. One Sunday in October, I walked through the new Foster school, and it took me 13 minutes. That day, we started the conversation with our son, that he can probably go to Foster to finish the Tweed program.
And good evening, Ward Administration. We appreciate all that you do. I know it's tough. Thank you for your thoughtful deliberation. We want Tweed to continue at Willard, because Spanish-speaking families exist in Wards 6 and 7, but we know it's not our decision. We have the following questions. Why weren't Willard-Tweed families invited to meet with Principal Burko in September? Why was Tweed only a single point in a presentation, a day in the life of a Foster student, in page slide number 19? Why were we being informed about the curriculum of the new Foster school? We want to know more why. Why didn't Ward 6 and 7 receive a survey? Ward 5 received a survey, but we did not. Is it Tweed, and I want to confirm, we understand, but is it true that Willard-Tweed is going to Foster? We believe they are, but just want to confirm that. The Hispanic people in Wards 6, 7, and 5 deserve to be part of the conversation, and I want Tweed to stay in Willard. We do exist. We are present, and let's make a positive contribution to the Willard community, in this D65 community. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Josie Anno, and I am a 5th grader at Lincolnwood Elementary. I'm here to support the Lincolnwood families and community. Why should Lincolnwood get closed down if the kids are growing and learning more and more every day? Not to mention the STEP program, which is thriving, and you cannot find more trained and professional staff. What will Lincolnwood even be if it's not a school? All I'm trying to say is don't close down Lincolnwood, because you won't be just closing down a school. You'll be closing down a community that the teachers and kids have been building for years. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Chris Van Nystrend. Nice to see you all again. I just have a recommendation, potentially for framing the discussion tonight around Lincolnwood, which is, we've heard some different data points and different concerns. One of them is about what happens to STEP. The other is about the potential deed restrictions, and then we know from past modeling that it is possible that closing a school doesn't actually save any money in the worst-case scenario. So I would recommend tonight that, as part of your deliberations, we think a step ahead and potentially start to answer those questions in advance of the vote, so that if the vote does take place, the public already has a little bit of a sense of what the contingency plans are, again, for programs like STEP. We have a clearer sense of what's happening on the legal front, and potentially, you are all capable as well of sharing more data around the expense reduction model within Lincolnwood, and particularly any revenue potential for that building, given that, as far as we know, it can't be sold or leased. So, again, I would just ask that potentially, from a transparency and legitimacy standpoint, the board try to address some of these questions that have come up today in the context of its deliberations. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Jeff Smith, and I'm sorry if I'm out of order. Couldn't hear the actual names being called. Thank you for your service, and I respect the tough challenges you face. Wow, that was a quick clock. Can I start over? Thank you for your service, and I respect the tough challenges you face. At home, I still have two entire banker's boxes from the 1990s stuffed with materials related to two years of resonant efforts to reopen what became Bessie Rhodes, of which we are very proud. My heart aches for the families disrupted by that closure decision, and I echo a speaker from a few nights ago who emphasized that every scenario being considered is for closing not one, but two or three schools. Also, I ache for the closing of Foster in the 1970s. When I first came here as a student, the difference being that that decision was community-driven, and it did not result from a misrepresentation that it wouldn't cost anything. It didn't result from a misrepresentation that nobody would be displaced to another school involuntarily. It didn't result from a misrepresentation that no schools would be closed. I detest the idea of putting neighborhoods or wards or people against each other, but having failed to vote for additionally closing only Kingsley, which I remember being reopened, it's not logical to vote without vetting to close Lincolnwood, which has less average overlap with other schools and whose closure would result in thousands more crossings of busy streets annually and significantly greater average distance. When Lincolnwood was first built, designed by Dwight Perkins, most lots in northwest Evanston were vacant. The neighborhood was literally built around it. Central Street was only paved to about Lincolnwood Avenue, and it was dirt road out to Gross Point Road. I ask you to rebuild not just attendance, but trust. Thank you.
Liz Wallens, Russ Schoen, Jessica Troyo, Esteban, Jacob Carlin, Scott Campbell, John Brady, Kelly McCabe, Jean Clipperton.
Hi, I'm Liz Wallens. I'm a D65 parent of three and a member of Invest in Neighborhood Schools. I'm here tonight to advocate for a vision. The SDRP process is focused heavily on the buildings in our district, on deferred maintenance, square footage, and geographic location, but there's been far less attention on what actually happens inside those buildings, and even less on the people in them, our students, teachers, and support staff. Their needs, their programs, and their futures must be centered in every decision that we make. I'm asking that we get clear on the learning environments we want, the supports our educators need, and the opportunities that we are committed to providing every child. Buildings matter, but only if they reflect a vision for what happens inside them. I urge the board to center- I urge the board to center that vision as the foundation of all future planning. Thank you for your time.
Hi, Russ Schoen. I'm a Willard parent. First of all, I'd like to thank the board members that stood to close as few schools as possible on Monday. I'm here to advocate a no vote on Lincolnwood. It doesn't make any sense, given the scorecards. After Monday, my eight-year-old asked, "How could the board members that voted to close two schools then just turn around and not vote to close the one school that the scorecards indicated?" And I tried to explain the budget, et cetera, and then I said, "Instead of $180 million budget," which is hard for kids and adults to understand, "I said, 'If the district needs $100 to run everything, some board members want to close an additional school to save $1 or 1%.'" He said, quote, "That's dumb. There has to be a better way." And I agree. I would really ask the board to ask your financial consultant if they went through the budget, line by line, and cut things that don't add value to student achievement, rebid nonbid contracts. Could you find at least 1%? The answer is yes. It's called recapture and reallocate. Now, I'm also the guy that wrote that your biggest problem is the trust deficit. I believe the board member who served under Dr. Horton did not do enough to just leave the presidency. He should step off or recuse himself from picking the next board member. Thank you.
My name's Jessica Troio. I'm a District 65 parent. I have four children. We've been part of the King Arts, Oakton Shoot, and our ETHS community. I want to state first of all, I'm not here to say I would vote for any particular school to be closed. But I want to ask why this board is willing to waste our time and our resources to demonstrate no fiscal responsibility in the end. To me, keeping all schools open at this moment is a flaunt of wealth and resources and a flippant disregard of the time and district funds already sunk into this years-long process. This process has revealed that the most financially viable option to stop this district from falling off a known financial cliff is to close at least one more school beyond Bessie Rhodes. Not acting will result in losing educational staff and supports in all of our current schools going forward. I want to be clear, I don't have a particular school as a target, and I don't want to see our own schools close. I've seen Kingsley families being very gracious about the circumstances, and it has been clear that Tweed is vital to our school communities. But please don't allow the education and student supports to be the sacrifice. Protect jobs, promote student success, preserve our district's financial viability, and uphold the integrity we demand from this process. Can we stop this now and move on to the next steps, which is focusing on the educational outcomes for our children? Thank you.
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Esteban Osikionis, y soy un nerd. Unlike CPS's December 1 deadline for school closure decisions, Evanston only requires 10 days' notice for public hearings and adequate time to execute the process properly. With that in mind, I'm asking you to step back and reimagine this process in a way that respects SDRP principles and repositions you to break the current deadlock. It may be unpopular, but here's what I propose. First, settle the ever-changing financial projections. Agree on how much actually needs to be saved. That seems to change at every meeting. Second, clearly lay out the trade-offs between revenue and cost-cutting options. Third, armed with shared knowledge, deliberate and vote on the number of schools to close, not which ones yet. Find a way to an agreement about the scale of the right sizing that is merited. Finally, only after agreeing on the number, evaluate the three most promising scenarios, focusing on options that maximize impact while minimizing disruption. Then vote, following randomized scenario and voter order, as suggested earlier. The proposed process gives everyone an alternative path to settling this impasse. It gives everyone a better chance of getting this right, letting you build agreement and trust, step by step. Thank you.
My name is Jacob Carlin with the Legion of Nerds. As Esteban mentioned in his comment last week, the narrative of shutter schools or cut programs is a false choice. We have an opportunity to think creatively to improve the district rather than perpetuate a race to contract it. The community has identified many financial levers on the expenditure side and the revenue side. In order for some of these revenue levers to be available, we have to have community trust and buy-in. At the last meeting, Dr. Pinkard pointed out that there are ample fundraising opportunities if the district has a vision. At this point, I urge you to put the politics aside and act in a way that will earn the public trust. Scrutinize the scare tactics, consider all of the available information, explore every option, look under every rock, and you owe it to your students. If you must close one school, sorry, if you must close a school, make sure it's the right one.
My name is Scott Campbell. I'm also with the Legion of Nerds. So we've spent months of discussion on school closures, yet none of the discussion has really focused on weighting the benefit and harm of the one-school scenarios. And yet, here we are. You know, we have a single-school ballot that really hasn't even been considered by the Facilities Committee. And because of that, the website data are out of date, and that scenario just really hasn't been updated like others have. So, we're really, you know, we're at a place where this is not a choice of really which school to close. It's a choice between a school and really the fear of the unknown. You know, what is the choice of not choosing a school? And families and kids really need the information on why their school is a school that needs to close. And we have reached the point where this process has broken, and we really need to figure out how to fix that. And I hope that we can move past this vote and have a real discussion on the future of the district. Thank you.
My name is Kelly McCabe. I'm a proud member of the Legion of Data Nerds, and I'm also a Tweed mom. As we've said before, if nobody knows, you shouldn't close. There are still too many unknowns to justify closing more than one school in addition to Bessie Rhodes. We're concerned that politics and egos are driving this decision-making process rather than a true desire to strengthen our district across all schools. Fear-driven political tactics, like claiming Title I schools or programs will be cut, simply aren't backed by the facts, and they are designed to create unhealthy rips within Evanston. Our research shows that we can achieve financial balance with just one closure. Closing schools should be a last resort and not the first. We need to cut administrative waste, saving at least $1.5 million, without affecting students or increasing class sizes. It's concerning that this option was not explored by the consultant. We would like the board to remember that the consultant and the administration answer to them, and not the other way around. This board should question the inconsistent, non-transparent, and flawed data that you are being provided. In the end, Evanston is all in this together. This is not a zero-sum game, and ultimately, we all do better when the district restores its reputation. All of our kids will end up together in classes at ETHS, all playing for the same team. Let's show our kids what real teamwork looks like.
I'm Jean Clipperton, also a data nerd, and I'm asking for us to re-center our focus and be sure we get it right. Monday, we were informed that this was a uniquely clear and transparent process. But later, in the same meeting, a board member was confused about the agenda, what was on the agenda, and what could or should not be on it. Tonight's agenda has a scenario that has not been considered by the Facilities Committee, and which has unclear restrictions present regarding its viability as an option. If the scenario has been carefully considered by the board, data has been updated and evaluated, and all costs and legal implications have been considered, then yes, the board should vote tonight. However, this is not the case. It is unclear what tonight's vote would mean, whether future closure discussions could occur, or if we need to again stop a meeting, we would need to again stop a meeting because we do not know what the process should be. Perhaps this is a sign to first get our facts straight. Measure twice, cut once. Thank you.
My name is Jamie, and I'm a D-65 parent, and a Tweed parent, I should say. I want to thank Pat, Nicole, and Maria for voting no on the two school closures. As much as I don't want to close any schools, I am a proponent for just closing Kingsley. I'd like to see D-65 go back and get an estimate on moving Pre-K, and how about into Lincolnwood? My daughter attended an old Chicago building for Pre-K. That nearly is nice as Lincolnwood, but she did fine. All that's needed really are some bathroom updates, a small playground area, and maybe some entry doors, secure doors. But that can be funded by selling this building. This large, expensive GEH building has major capital needs. Remaining administration, after we right-size administration, remaining administration can relocate into existing schools or the maintenance building. I'm not really sure why the SDRP Facilities and Financed Committees didn't look into this building more, and maybe you did, but I didn't see the data. Finally, I still don't understand why non-union admin requested a 4.5% raise in August totaling more than half a million dollars, if the district really is in such financial distress that you have to tear apart communities by closing our neighborhood schools. The solutions are clear: Move Pre-K into Lincolnwood. Sell GEH instead of closing neighborhood schools.
At this time, we're going to move on to have this written. That's up to you all.
Do board members have statements they want to make?
Oh. It's just a letter. Well, we can read it out loud. It's a letter from the principals. We received it via email as well.
Question? It's no... Do we want to read it? Do we want to read it? Okay. What's the board regarding this communication? Fine.
Yeah. The principal's written it.
Okay. I'll read it. Why don't you read it? I'm losing my voice.
That's why I asked. So I'm going to read this on behalf of...
I apologize.
The board president is losing her voice. This letter is a letter that was written by the principals of District 65. It reads, and they wanted to submit this for public comment, to the school board. Dear members of the District 65 Board of Education, we write to you today with deep disappointment and growing concern. As building leaders who are responsible for the daily safety, academic growth, and well-being of every student and staff member in our care, we must express that the board's ongoing inability to reach a decision on the school district, the structural deficit reduction process, is actively undermining the stability of our schools. For more than 12 months, the SDRP has engaged all stakeholders, families, educators, community members, consultants, and district leaders. The process has produced an extraordinary amount of data, clear analysis, and multiple thoughtful recommendations. Your board-approved consultant provided measured, research-based guidance. District leadership has repeatedly delivered detailed information, maps, models, and projections. The community has participated in good faith. School leaders have remained publicly silent, trusting that the board will honor the process it initiated. Yet despite all of this, no consensus has been reached, at a time when a decision is not only overdue but absolutely essential for the 26-27 school year. This school year alone, the district has sustained significant staffing reductions at the central office, resulting in extremely limited capacity for school-based support. Despite these constraints, district staff members have repeatedly diverted what little professional bandwidth remains to produce yet more reports, analysis, and presentations, often because board members arrive at meetings without clear, pointed, data-driven questions. Instead, time is spent on hypotheticals and scenarios untethered to the facts or to the professional recommendations already provided. This pattern has placed an enormous burden on our strained systems and has pulled critical support away from school leaders and the student-facing work we must prioritize. Ultimately, the board's inaction is failing our schools, and the consequences are not abstract. If the board reaches the point of state intervention, as becomes more likely with continued indecision, the impacts will be devastating and immediate. Schools will be reduced to the bare minimum required for operation. The positions that make our schools whole and responsive to students' needs, librarians, interventionists, instructional coaches, assistant principals, fine arts teachers, PE teachers, clinicians, and more are at risk. These are not luxuries. They are essential components of equitable, well-rounded education. Their loss will limit our ability to provide rich learning experiences, individualized support, and safe, sustainable school environments for all learners. This is the cost of continued delay. As principals, we are accustomed to leading through turbulence, just as pilots rely on air traffic control to make timely, informed decisions that keep everyone safe. We rely on the board to provide clear direction and provide a stable course. We can reassure our communities, steady our staff, and keep instruction moving forward, but we cannot do so if the designation keeps shifting or if guidance never arrives. When that happens, the entire system becomes vulnerable. That is the moment we are now approaching. We implore the board to make a timely, final decision grounded in the integrity of the SDRP process, the extensive data that has been gathered, and the professional guidance already provided. The district cannot continue in a state of uncertainty. Our schools, our students, and our educators deserve stability, clarity, and responsible governance. The SDRP was built to guide this decision. The information is complete. The recommendations are clear. The only remaining step is for the board to act decisively and without further delay. We urge you to uphold the process you initiated and make a decision now in the best interest of all schools and all students. Sincerely, the Principals of District 65.
Can you please share which principals? The principals of District 65. The principals of District 65.
Let's bring this back to order. Out of order. If the quorum cannot be maintained, you will be asked to leave. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the action item regarding the one-school closure scenario of Lincolnwood School. Stacy, will you provide us with a brief summary?
Sure. Are we... Just one second, and welcome. So, just as Adila's bringing this up, I will walk through some data for Scenario 1B. The data tables were essentially developed based on the updated data that we have been using for the scenarios that the board has looked at in the last two meetings. To speak to the board comments, because of the timing of this scenario, we did not follow our traditional process for this. Normally, we would prepare it with the updated data, and then we would redo the analysis of strengths and challenges with the feedback from our subcommittee. You will get strengths and challenges tonight, but it did not come out of the regular process. All right. Let's see. I'm always not good at driving this. Or do we have to turn it on? That's always step number one. You got it? Cool. Thank you, Adila. All right. So just grounding us again, essentially, District 65 is scheduled to implement the board-approved boundaries for 26-27, as we bring Foster School online for students and families, and as we close Bessie Rhodes. The baseline, which we have used for data modeling throughout the process, is built on 18 schools, and the feeder patterns on the slide. Should the board take no action on school closing, the district will move forward with the schools on the slide for the 26-27. the schools on the slide for the 26-27 school year. And I'm simply saying, if you don't take action, not necessarily... So that's it. Moving to the next slide. And for the baseline, should we move forward into 26-27 boundaries, essentially what we would be looking at for K-5 utilization, same slide from last time, would be 73% in the SHOOT feeder pattern. SHOOT feeder pattern consists entirely of Title I schools. Haven feeder pattern, the K-5 elementaries, would be at 50%, and that would be five schools: Kingsley, Lincolnwood, Orington, Willard, and Foster, with Foster projected to be Title I, and the Nichols feeder pattern at 68% with Washington being Title I. Adila? All right. Now I'm going to move into Scenario 1B. And Scenario 1B is... Go ahead with the next. There we go. So what you see here is if the board were to move forward with Scenario 1B, that utilization rate average in the K-5s moves to 59%. In the scenarios you will see tonight, we do have program movement, which is why the Nichols number does shift from 68 to 77, because as we explained in the last board meeting, what we've shifted to doing when we model STEP is removing six classrooms, because if we're going to move STEP, we want to make sure that we're setting up a long-term space for them, and that would allow for potential program growth, or classrooms for related service providers, or a little bit of both. And so we essentially removed a full strand from Lincoln in this particular scenario. We stayed consistent with the modeling from Monday, which is why that utilization rate goes up to 77% for Nichols. So if we can go on to the next slide, please. Here we see the map for Scenario 1BR, and we attached the R because we did update it with the October 1 enrollment data. And what we continue to show here, and it is, we continue to show that the eighth TWE section, which is in fact, we have eight sections in first through fifth grade this year, we closed that TWE section at Willard, we opened two strands at Foster, we do close two strands at Rhodes. District-wide, we have an average classroom size of 16 in TWE. Moving for all the way to seven strands would move us to 19 students as an average class size district-wide. So one, we consistently show that TWE section at Willard closing. And number two, here, we do move STEP to Lincoln because we're trying to make sure that we get that long-term home for a program. And again, that could either be Dewey or Lincoln. We continue to work with Student Services to find the right location, and that could happen prior to any final closing vote. Strengths and challenges for this particular scenario: when we look at the remaining schools, you are distributed fairly well geographically east to west. Kingsley does sit on two hazards, however, as was pointed out earlier tonight. The closure and reassignment can be achieved with minimal hazard crossings and creates transportation savings. And actually, I meant to edit that down. I think we're at the 100 to 300 range, so please consider that as $100,000, because I think that's consistent with the slide further down. And then we maintain boundaries similar to the board-approved 26-27 boundaries, which is important, because there are families that have been considering those boundaries for the last couple of years, and in some cases have permissive transfers into some of those schools. Challenges: yes, we absolutely have some uncertainty about the ability to lease Lincolnwood. As was stated in the previous meeting, there is uncertainty, and should the board be interested in leasing, we are working with our legal in order to take a look at Mr. Philippiani's memo, which we have received, to do the analysis required to determine what options would be available. That is underway, but we do not have the outcomes of that at this time. So that shows as a challenge, uncertainty about the ability to lease that building. Additional challenges are that Kingsley and Foster are geographically very close to each other, so we're maintaining two schools that are very close to each other. We noted in Monday night's board meeting that the utilization rate should students from the Haven feeder pattern that live in Foster attend Foster and the Rhodes students attend, that utilization rate gets pretty full. But that is essentially a four-year agreement with Rhodes families, which means that utilization rate would get smaller again, which is why we recommended reviewing boundaries again in five years at a max, because that means you could potentially adjust and be able to get some of those families into a walkable distance of Foster. And then we have five schools, and this is district-wide, five K-5 schools that would have a utilization rate of 65% or lower if we move forward in this particular scenario. That is similar to 1A. And then in comparison to 1A, this scenario has an increased number of students that are traveling more than 3/4 of a mile to school, so over the 1A scenario. That is it for me tonight. Dr. Turner?
Yep. So Dr. Harkin and Tamara couldn't be here tonight. Click the next slide, please. So I'm not going to go through these slides again, because we've already gone through them. Here's D1 for the financial model projections that was recommended. Click the next slide, please. Here's D1 again. You'll see 1A and 1B, this slide. You've seen it already. It's there. Click to the next slide, Adila. And then here's the financial model, D2, which is the same slide that has been presented. And I think that is it for the slides. Is that correct?
That is correct.
That's it.
That's correct.
Okay.
All right, let's open it up for discussion.
Claire, Stacy, one question around STEP. Up to this point, we thought about STEP staying in the Haven feeder pattern, and now STEP moves to the Nichols feeder pattern because it's in Lincoln. And Lincoln, Nichols, as the data says, is 95%. For what does STEP moving to Lincoln mean for Nichols in terms of my assumption is adding another STEP cohort to Lincoln? While Lincoln might be able to handle it, how we thought about Nichols being able to handle that increased population?
Yep. The particular utilization rate for this scenario, Nichols would be at 88%. And Nichols has decreasing enrollment in its K-5 elementaries. It's largely gone from a four-section feeder to a three-section feeder. And so the 88% is 1B. We did talk to Student Services about that, so I'm going to rewind a couple of things. We put a good amount of detail in that Monday night memo that spoke to the thinking and the deliberation that's been happening with STEP. We want to make sure we're considering facilities. We want to make sure we're considering long-term options for growth. We want to make sure that we're considering related services. And we had a discussion about, is it better to have it dispersed across feeder patterns or within a feeder pattern? And one of the things from the specialized services department was that they noted that STEP was already in Nichols, and that they felt that being able to do that transition into Nichols and have all of them in the same feeder pattern was not a detriment, was actually a potential strength, because again, we can concentrate the expertise of our professionals to be able to serve that population well. And similar to like what we've done at King Arts with Rise, we want to train all of our educators to be able to serve that population well, because we want to benefit with the benefits of inclusion. And so it concentrates the ability for capacity building. So one, utilization rate is closer to 88%. We see that as being manageable going forward, and we are carving out spaces, because we will also have a dual-language program coming into sixth grade at Nichols next year as well. And so we've been trying to manage for those things. And two, the benefit was concentration of expertise and resources and professional learning rather than dispersing. And the kids can then stay with their cohort, K-8.
So the 88% is the new utilization of Nichols is with the second addition of STEP added to it?
The, we have, we do move numbers out. I am looking specifically at the utilization table for Scenario 1B when I state 88%. Okay.
A question about the zero baseline scenario. We've heard from many people about how that still eliminates Willard-TWE. But then if you look at the financial implications, there's no savings indicated from that. And so I'm just, I'm, I think part of us owning where we are as a board is that we haven't looked at zero. And then by defaulting to zero, immediately eliminating TWE at Willard with no financial benefit that is indicated here. Can you just help me piece through that?
Yeah. So there are a couple of things that we're looking at here. When we began modeling scenarios, we started with one-school closures and then two-school closures. And what was beginning to consistently come up in our utilization charts were TWE classrooms that were very underutilized. And so that's actually where we kind of had the initial flag. What I should say as a precursor, we did also, when we did our section review in August this year as part of our section reduction procedures, we noted low enrollment, and we did close a kindergarten TWE section. Now, we really work not to close TWE sections in single-section schools once they're beyond K, because if we do that, what we're either doing, we're essentially saying to a family, you have to move schools. And the last thing any one of us wants to do in a single-strand scenario is say potentially a third grader, fourth grader, or fifth grader, to stay in their program, needs to move schools. And so we did this fall, realized because we had an opportunity, we didn't have enough enrollment in one of our K sections, we closed that K section. So we have seven sections in K, we have eight in the other grades, but we have several that are, we have a couple that are below 10. And what the memo stated on Monday was that we have 17 of the 40 classes in the district that have enrollment of 15 or below are TWE sections. So when the utilization rates started coming back, I met with the multilingual department, and I said, this is what we're noticing. What would you think about this possibility? We worked it through, and I've been working with the multilingual department throughout, and so they were supportive of shifting to the seven strands. Now, that is, you know, when we look at it, they date also, and the memo stated that we would average class size go from 16 to 19. Our TWE classrooms, we try to do 90% of our general education population, so if we take 90% of our DEC guidelines, 23 would be 21 in a TWE classroom, so we're still in a good position there. And for third through fifth grade is 25, which would put us at 23. And so, you know, so we had that. Then we also had, from the program subcommittee, we had the guidance that essentially said, if you're moving strands, try to double them up and try to move them into the schools closest to where the TWS students live. So we expanded that to TWS and TWX. And I do understand, you know, Willard community said they feel like we made them invisible in our scorecards. Our scorecards in July included the Willard-TWE families in the Willard scorecard. It was when we got around, when we moved into September, and that we began modeling with the seven strands and not at Willard, that we started reflecting them at Foster. So they've always been in our data. The initial scorecard versions that we brought forward September 29th had them in the Willard piece, and then after that, they've been reflected in Foster. Okay? So there's that. We were looking at utilization, we were looking at class size numbers, and we were looking at the program guidance, ultimately to land where we are. Now, as far as cost savings, I would, what I, we are still very much, once we get a decision, our very next step is to create essentially our seats and sections for next year. And so we have done preliminary work on that to reflect some of the savings in Susan's diagrams, but it is at that point, we've got a number of decisions about exceptions, things along those lines that we need to be able to say, okay, that would mean a reduction of six classrooms. It could be that we have up to a reduction of six classrooms because we've consolidated a TWE strand. It could also be that if we see, for instance, maybe some students don't move, that we don't net all of those savings. And so what we are trying to do is be very conservative about our section savings. On the surface, it seems like we could save up to six sections. We may not net that kind of savings just because of the TWE going from eight to seven. Okay? So we're trying to be conservative. I think we'll see some of that, but we may not see all of it, because we may need to see some section adjustments in other places because of families with permissive transfer options and other things like that.
I just have a follow-up on that. Wasn't the reduction of the kindergarten section at Bessie Roads?
It was.
Do we think that the reason that there was less enrollment in Bessie Roads is because families knew it was closing?
The, so registration really works with families. We do have a footprint map. We say that we are placing folks in the TWE program that is in their feeder pattern. If it's their homeschool, that's easy. If it's not, we have certain schools mapped. But what they do is they work to place the family. If it comes up and they say, hey, we have an objection to Rhodes, if we, we generally would then say, we don't have a space available right now. But I know a couple of families came in towards the end, we were able to offer a seat at a different program when we knew we had space. So some of those families, if they felt like they didn't want to go to Rhodes, may very well be reflected in other programs' numbers, because they were given essentially a permissive transfer entrance to the program. We only wait to do that last minute, because we want to make sure that we have space and we're not eliminating, and we always keep them in the feeder pattern as well.
I guess my question is really around, you know, we haven't had the conversation about TWE, so I'm happy to table that for now, or we can have it now, because it's kind of not the topic of conversation. But I'm curious about the applications for TWE and the chart that we saw today, and I haven't validated that, I don't know what it looks like. Andrew's a nice guy. If we have seen increase in Spanish population, and if so, are we seeing a decline in English student population, and that's why we're seeing a decline in TWE enrollment? Are we turning TWE, TWE students away? Like, it doesn't, it's sort of, I don't know if you can speak to that?
Certainly, if this is something that the board had a desire to know more about, I would certainly be willing to bring back a memo and come back with multilingual leadership, and we can certainly share the numbers that we have been looking at. I have worked very closely with the multilingual team. I know that they are, they're comfortable with the current recommendations that are here, and I think what we also see is a lot of variability in the population, and unfortunately, the political climate is not really good for us right now.
Yeah, I think I just, I'm reflecting on the fact that we had COVID kind of in the middle of this, so we had a decline in TWE enrollment in English during those years. And so we're kind of coming out of that now.
Right.
Those kids are in fifth grade, I want to say now.
The, yep, sixth grade was in kindergarten.
Right. So I'm wondering if by restricting the number of sections, if we have a growing population of Spanish students, then we're going to end up in a scenario where the mix is not ideal? Anyway, we don't have to answer this now.
And I'll answer that, and then certainly if the board's will is that we pick up that conversation other time we can. The students don't enter TWE after first grade.
Right.
And so, like, we can see numbers-wise that we're okay at seven strands in the upper grades. And one of the nice things potentially about double strands also is that if we get the, you know, the kids coming in, we're in a good shape. If we don't, we can also manage sections, and we're not having to move kids out of schools. And this is something, like, where we want to get to is to be responsive to what we see. We always want to have, we shoot for a 50-50, but the multilingual department has set a range of native Spanish versus native English speakers. So sometimes we may say to a TWE family, we don't have a space, because we're holding a balance. And so numbers-wise, if we had an influx, we would be able to add another section, but we have given, we have parameters that we're trying to model with here in order to execute closures, to plan buildings, and right now, the current number of students could be well-served with seven strands.
Yeah, and anecdotally, what I've heard, and this was years back, and I don't know if this is still a continuing pattern, but what happens at times, what will happen is TWE families will sign their kids up to two-way immersion programs. But around third, fourth, fifth grade, they start getting nervous, right? Because they have to start testing and trying to place into, maybe not ETS, but maybe a private high school or something, whatever. Anecdotally, that's what I've heard across the state, that that's kind of what happens. So, you know, if you can ask Stace, Amy, our multilingual director, to kind of look into that and how that's impacting that balance, because I think, again, I've seen that at, working as a multilingual teacher in different school districts, but also, again, folks kind of are excited about their kid learning language, TWE folks. But, again, they start getting to the point, well, and especially in schools like CPS where you're... like CPS where you're, you're competing to get into like, some really great high schools, then they start pulling their kids out. And then that starts impacting, you know, the numbers and, and the ideal composition of a two-way immersion classroom. So, but just again, something to ask about, again, we're not CPS, but, but it is something that I, again, if you ask Amy to look into.
Yeah, and I would just add, I want to remind folks if they want to explore further what Sergio was saying. Last year, the joint board meeting, we collaborated with ETS and District 65, and we did an extensive presentation. I'm sure it's in the archives. So if you want to learn more about it, how it different, it looks different, how when they transition from here to 202, like, all the things that he just described, and even, they even had a student who was a District 65 student who spoke of her experience, which is one of the reasons, in terms of, before we expanded dual language into middle school, she would just take, once she finished out in, in fifth grade, she would drop off the program going to middle school. Now that we are expanding dual language out to our middle schools, we're making the transition for kids going into ETS much more seamless and we're getting much more aligned. I don't want to go into detail, because that's not what tonight's conversation is about, but you can catch it on the archive.
And just a quick, just a quick add-on to that as well, the vision for, for two-way immersion students, right, is that across, that we want all of them to end up with a seal of bi-literacy. So, again, our multilingual department has been working with the multilingual folks at ETS, because again, the seal of bi-literacy is just a well-respected seal, and it can save you thousands of dollars in college, you know, tuition, and then, and then again, just it's something to really have a vision and, and a goal as in regards to two-way immersion programming, so.
Stacy, let me ask you about the proposal that's before us in terms of closing Lincolnwood and the restrictions around that. At the last meeting, there was talk of the repair and replace model, and possibly using Lincolnwood would be a location that would be prime for that because we, because we're still investigating what the title and leasing possibilities are. So is that, can you talk to that a little more?
So, I think the first thing I would want to do is wait for our legal to come back and let us know what the parameters are that we would need to operate within, both in any kind of renovation or all the way through to leasing. So, you know, I, I don't think I want to go on record before we have answer from our council, because I think that's the best place to start.
Okay. I want to just make sure that my colleagues, I had written, Ruchy, our attorney, today, I don't know, because you guys were at conference, if you had a chance to see it, it was late in the day, two questions that I asked. One, what is the statutory timing for the board to vote to close a school? Because I was under the impression before it was December 1st, it's not. I know we backed up, and there was a memo potentially from, from our attorney about backing up the sort of, you know, last, last chance date from when we would need to provide notice to our bargaining units, but I'm unclear of what that date is. And reference the conversation or an email that I couldn't find, so I'm hoping we can find that, so we understand kind of what our timeline looks like. And then, if we are planning on reassigning students to a new school, but do not plan to sell or lease a school building, are we required to vote to close it? And then on the flip side, if we are, if we are going to put students in a building at a later date or for a swing space, does closing, does voting to close that building then present any issues for us in putting students in it subsequently? Like, do we have to go ahead and vote to open it again? I don't know. The answer to that, and I think the, she didn't have an opportunity to, to respond to both of those, so.
Are you saying that you did not get a response?
I got a response, I was going to read the response.
Okay, good. You just said that she didn't get an opportunity to respond to both of those, and I'm looking at the email what she did, so that's why I was asking for clarification.
What I, what I meant to say was that the answer wasn't complete. So, like, she didn't have answers. So, the first one is, I think we talked about, I mentioned, Labor Council recently wrote to you, Dr. Turner, an email regarding the timing implications with respect to various labor agreements. I think the rest of the board hasn't seen that yet. I think leadership may have seen it. And then the second question about the meaning of closing a school, the statute doesn't define what a school closure means. To best answer your question, I would want to do some research and perhaps ask ISV for guidance. The only statutory definition I know of is in Article 34 of the School Code, which only applies to Chicago Public Schools. In Article 34, which again, does not apply to Evanston, school closure is defined as the closing of a school, the effect of which is the assignment and transfer of all students enrolled at that school to one or more designated receiving schools. So, it still doesn't answer the question of, if we vote to close Lincolnwood and then we want to put students in it, do we then have to vote to open it again? Or how does that work? So if we are going to use it as a swing space to renovate other schools and we vote to close it, does that have downstream implications? So.
I was just going to flag, so the date that you're talking about is April 15th. So we have to back in, educators would have to be notified by April 15th, and she talked about two other things in that email. If it's a certain amount, like, based off of the last three years, if it's over five layoffs, over 150%, then we actually have to do, we have to notify DEC and have a hearing. She also, and she being our attorney, the last thing she flagged was just the good-faith bargaining conversation, so we actually have to talk about the impacts of potential layoffs for educators with DEC well in advance of that.
Yeah, I'm not advocating for drawing this out any longer than necessary, but I just want to make sure that we.
Oh, no, yeah, I'm just, I just wanted to lay out the information that she shared.
Thank you, Tiffany. Go ahead.
So can I ask, well, as practically, Dr. Turner, of timeline here, if, Angela, so I want to start with, Maria, I'm hearing also, like, openness right to keep conversation going, is that what I'm hearing?
Well, I guess what I'm wondering, right, is I just don't really understand why we're here. So, I think what I would have preferred to happen is that, you know, Pat has almost, you know, unanimous control over the, over the, over the agenda. I think we're trying to be careful about making sure that all things are heard. You, Andrew, wanted us to have this proposal brought up and have this special meeting today. And again, on the other hand, it is true that we all voted to close Kingsley, which is, was a one-school solution that was presented on, on Monday. And so, I'm really trying to grapple with this choice today. And on the one hand, I firmly believe that we need to close a school, and on the other hand, I feel like Lincolnwood isn't the best choice. And so, I'm really conflicted about that, and I'm just being totally transparent, I've talked to some of you about it. And so, is there an opportunity for us to come back at a near-later date and potentially have a revote of the Kingsley scenario and see if we can do the right thing?
If we meet again, I would want to do a revote on all the scenarios. All of them. All of them. Not just the Kingsley scenario, but just get it right and get them all on there, and we all vote on it. I mean, that, that's all I'm, I'm willing to do.
Can you define "all"?
Well, again, the, the two school closures, right, as well as the one school closures that we've already talked about in the past.
So, two D, two R, two F, two R, one A, and one B. Do we need to vote, is one B? Yes, Andrew, you want to vote on one B?
So process-wise, right, we're, we may not find a will of the board, so we probably should just include it, right? Right at this moment. So, it would make sense to follow the recommendations of the administration unless we can make another decision.
And I think we need to be observant of the timelines that we need to follow. We have this comment letter, public comment from the principals, and I can tell that that's, that's the reality that we're dealing with. I can say, this is one of the, other than having a baby, this is the hardest thing I've ever had to do.
Having a baby's quicker.
Not for me, it wasn't.
Quicker than this.
So anyway, this is not an easy decision, and I want to make sure that our community can heal from this. As a new board president, I have worked diligently to build consensus, but the process is become mired in indecision. And looking at this proposal with not having a surety of use of what we can actually do with the building would be a difficult decision to close. It may not provide us with the savings we need, and we need to move to a place where we can minimize the impact of the closure in terms of the additional cost savings that we have to garner from this process. So, the board is here, we've been transparent, we've put it all out in the public, you've seen the struggle with our decision. And the reason we're here was, is really based on an issue with the agenda. So, I would like to hear from other board members, if they could bring their voice into the room, and then we can move to the.
In, when our voice on, in general, or just on this particular? So I would, I'm, all of us have done some soul searching on what's here, and for me, going back and looking at so many documents, I'm like, how did I get from three to two to one? And so, I went back and, program reductions on every form means a lot to me. And the first one said, program reductions, while we probably were looking at three, was 7.9 million. What we saw on this, we just saw, was 2 million. That's a very different thought of what it means to the district to cut 7.9 in programs for all kids, marginalized kids, versus 2 million. Right? So I just want to, you know, all of us can go back and look at those documents, at our decisions, and to say that, and it's important, I say this all the time, our reason to get to 2 million was because of the phenomenal work of our, of the team here. And so, we're just not being scared to not make a decision. The data is changing. Wouldn't never said three schools, thought about three schools if we knew it was $2 million. And so for me, the 2 million makes me feel confident that we can, I'd still believe in closing one, but find the time for this team to come up with a real plan that we need. At 7.9 million, I would have felt like, okay, we don't have that time to do that. And so I know that's my pondering is, you know, to close two schools and to make money, if you will, not make money, but end up in the black without so many open questions. With so many open questions is just, it's just difficult to me. So I'm still on one-school closure, but I am Kingsley in, in that sense. And so, I sit here so conflicted on having to, if we have to vote on Lincolnwood, because I don't think that's what the data tells us, and I don't think, and the facilities team did not tell us, they gave us scenarios and they rated the scenarios, and if it was one school closure, it was Kingsley. So in that sense, I would welcome the opportunity to be able for all of us to come backwards in this. And I respect that we need to look at all the scenarios again, and we all need to think about what it means to close two. And maybe some of our minds might change on that, but I also think we need to think about closing Kingsley again as the one.
Let me just say that going from two to one was, in my thinking, based on the heavy load of actually closing two schools while opening Foster. We are, our budget is heavily influenced by the opening of Foster, and that needs, and to me, that needs to, we need to put the work in to realize the value of that. It's not, to me, it's not about North Side, South Side, it's about doing the work and doing it completely and getting it done and seeing what the, the outcome of that work is to the community. To me, it would be a vehicle to show the community that we can get the good work done. My one-school closure scenario is not based on then moving to balance the back of this work on any of the Title I schools. That is not part of my consideration. That's not part of my consideration. I know we could, we could close two schools and get it done. Somebody's going to be happy, nobody's going to be happy about any of this. I don't want to close any schools. But I want to maintain financial stewardship over District 65. I am a, I'm here because of Bessie Rhodes. So I have firsthand experience with what school closure looks like. It's a decision that we had to make to move forward, but I know how difficult it is even for administration to make those decisions. And I know how difficult it is for families to experience that. The Bessie Rhodes families have a new school to go to, but that doesn't diminish the difficulty of their process. When we're looking at closing two schools, many people in those communities don't see the benefit of it, and that, that makes it a very difficult choice. I'm also looking at this in terms of our legacy as a board. We have two board members that will be leaving us in two years. Unfortunately, we had a board member resign in the middle of the process, which may have avoided where we are now, but maybe not. Maybe not. I can't blame it on that. So, I'm looking, I mean, I have four more years here, I'm not leaving. I'm not leaving. I, I have faith in the data, I have faith in the District 65 administrators, they've done a yeoman's job in putting this together. But I have to wrestle with what I know I think is best for the district. This Lincolnwood option is not the best. So that's, that's where I'm landing. This is very difficult decision. Any other voices in the room?
Well, I'll just say that, you know, obviously, this is a very difficult decision. It's pretty clear that we need to do something from a budget perspective, because, you know, finding this within our district without cutting schools is going to hurt all of us. Let's just be honest about that, it's going to hurt all of us. I don't think that closing Lincolnwood alone makes any more sense than closing Kingsley alone, because I think at the end of the day, when you close one school, you're Because I think at the end of the day, when you close one school, you're in a position where you have to still make substantial cuts over time or end up closing another school in order to get to where we need to be, which I think will just prolong the pain in the community. And so, you know, I, like, I don't see this as being even the best out of the bad options. I think that, you know, we need to reconsider, reflect some more, and I would be for coming back and voting on all of the scenarios again as well.
Yeah, I would support coming back and voting on the scenarios. In the meantime, we do have some time for conversation as a board. I just want to name a little bit, right, there's stark divides still. The reality is 15,794, 198,000. If we close one school that has programming and staffing implications, it's roughly, if you compound the school savings, and this is a guesstimate, and I haven't been doing simple math, I'm not doing compounding effects, just to be clear, but it's roughly $8.5 million of additional cuts we will need over four years from programming and staffing. If we close two schools, it's just over $2 million of programming and staffing reductions when you aggregate the savings. So this is a lot of money, right?
Can you say that again? I'm sorry, I wasn't following. You said it was $15 million if we close one school and $2 million if we close two?
So I've run the numbers by Tamara.
Okay.
And she affirmed them. I'm happy to share my document with you.
I'm not questioning you.
Yeah.
I just didn't, you want to hear it again?
Well, you should. If you aggregate savings, which we've not seen a graph of the implications of these school closures over four years, to my memory, that a one-school closure of the 15, 7, 9, 4, 1, 9, 8, using simple multiplication, would still require almost $8.5 million of programming and staffing cuts. A two-school closure, again, aggregating the cost savings without counting compounding effect, would require $2.3 million over four years of additional programming and staffing cuts. And so what I'm trying to raise here is not to dig in deeper, but just to say, these are big issues. That's a lot of money. We have some talking to do.
So just to follow up, so I think, one, there's a lack of clarity in some things we've been saying. I think we've said it, I think I've said it every single time I've talked. I don't mean close one school, it's done, we're moved forward. Is close one school this year, let's create the full plan, which includes how we're rebuilding schools, come back to this as a vote next year with this same board. And at that point, either we have clarity around we have to close a second school in the North Side, or we have a plan around how not to do it. So to me, it's not, I agree with you, if I'm saying, hey, one school, just eight mil, let's just eat the 8 million, 15 million dollars. No, I wouldn't say that. I'm saying one year, we've been on the board how long, six months? We have not been able to fully figure out what is the holistic plan around excellence, opportunity, making sure this makes sense. We just haven't done that. And I don't think any of us can say, if we voted right now, that we have a plan that braids together, which we were told, programming, the financial cuts, and the, and the facilities. We don't have the, as we keep, we don't have the special education audit, we don't have the master facilities plan, we need to have an audit of our transportation and special ed. So there's a lot of unknowns here that is money that can have impact, and also our partnerships that could change this. So just want to be clear, it's not just close one, we're done, figure out the cuts. It's close one, let's hold ourselves accountable to having a plan with this board, come back, vote, be responsible. And at that point, it might still be closing a second school. Or it might be partnering with using a school in some other ways. So that's, I just, I think that's getting lost in some sense. I just want to clarify, at least from my perspective.
Can I throw just two things in from the administration side for a second, Pat? Is that okay? I think just something to consider, Nicole, with your comment about one and wait, is that we then reintroduce the idea potentially that students are moving multiple times. And so if the board does decide to move forward with one closure, if the thinking is there's a second one later, then there would need to be some guidance about whether that should inform the boundaries or not, because it does certainly increase the, like, the potential of, of multiple moves for kids. Then the second thing that I just want to say is, for administration, I think what we've pretty clearly communicated over time is, we need a decision by winter break. We have heard a lot about the fact that we need to execute this well. We plan to execute this well, we want to execute this well. But any timetables that you walk back from April 15 have a whole lot of steps. And we need to know where we're going by winter break to be able to execute any closures that would be in place for the beginning of next school year. Dr. Turner?
Yeah. Anything else to say? We've said it all.
I mean, this is a huge puzzle that I know you all are trying to put together in terms of where students move, boundaries, staffing decisions. There are so many different implications that come from closing a school. And to do that, to make all of those changes, to move things around, and then to have to come right back and start this whole process over again, like the pain for the community, the pain for making the decisions about who goes where and how, that to me, while we still have to make significant reductions because one school, only one school would be closing, and we have to, you know, try to keep the 90 days cash on hand, at the same time as we're doing that process, to me, it's just a recipe for more chaos and disaster. And so like, I know we've talked a lot about, you know, it's hard to execute closing Bessie Rhodes and two schools, but I think that what we're not considering is how hard it is to execute closing Bessie Rhodes, closing one school, continue to try to figure this out, and then come back and do it all over again and have students have to move a second time.
So I will say, you know, the, the, the challenge of having people move two times, initially when we heard that's like, yes. But I have not heard the North Side parents, to a T, they have said, we're willing, we're willing for that risk. The second is the process that we've gone through, the process for SDRP, there isn't, I don't believe we're saying we're gonna go through this full, we have the data, we have the scorecards, we have all that. It's, it's not going through this full process again. It's using the information, doing some updates. So I think it is a different thing, but I, to a T, the North Side families have said, take the time, we are, we are willing to, to deal with that. Now, that doesn't mean, and, and I am not, and given most of the closures, the closures will happen to them, I think that's something to take into consideration. We do have to take into consideration the effort and the, and what it means on the administration. And I'm not putting, I'm not limiting that, but I don't think, I think the process of SDRP to create all this materials is, is this process. I do not expect that we have to go through all of that again. If we were in, in six months to say, here's what we learned, now how do we think about that? I think that's important to put in the, in the...
Yeah, and I, I just want to add, the process we're referring to is the process of closing a school.
Yeah.
That is, that is not a, that's not gonna be a, an easy lift, no, in, any which way. So, so I, I don't want to underestimate that, or, or say that we're talking about the SDRP process, because for me, it's specifically that process of engaging in closing a school. That, that was the process, this, that's the process.
But isn't each school, but each school is an individual school that has to be closed. And so whether we close three right now, there's some things that are, but it's still, it's still, in each individual school adds a magnitude to that. So I definitely understand doing three at one time is going to have some efficiencies, but at the same time, doing three at one time has some complexities as well. So it just, it is, its own school needs to be treated in its own, in its own unique way as we think through closures.
I don't know, it's just confusing to me, because if we feel confident enough in the data to close one school, and we feel confident enough, like in the SDRP process and what the plan is to close one school, then why wouldn't we feel confident in it enough to close two? To me, it's confusing that it's like, you know, we're willing to go this far, but we don't want to see how all the pieces work together because we need more information. I feel like we either need more information or we don't.
I can jump in there. I think, I think what I'm facing, when I'm looking at the different scenarios and moving from one school to two schools, what I see there is an uncertainty in transportation, and I see a plummeting of walkability in the North. And, and so what does that do to our, to our transportation costs? So that's a level of uncertainty that I see moving one to two. The next thing is, you know, I just want to name that the North Side of Evanston has decreased their enrollment at a greater rate than the cent, than the central section of the southern section of Evanston. And a lot of those kids have gone to private schools. They haven't moved. They're coming back to HHS. And so my question is around, if we close two schools, are we cutting off our opportunity? And I know you and I disagree on this, Maya, so that's okay. But you asked for why. We're cutting off our opportunity to, to win those students back in future generations, if you will. Because there is no neighborhood school for them to go to. And then, and then after that, when I look at the boundaries and I think about the movement of people in the hours in which school starts and ends, you know, there's a lot of people that are gonna be traversing Green Bay Road at Lincoln or Green Bay Road at Central. And those intersections are really problematic as they stand today at those times. And so the, and then when I, when I turn around and look at the increase in cost that that will, that's, that closing just one school is, it doesn't feel like it's enough for me to say, we have to do this right now, because it is, it's a million dollars. That's the delta for, for one year. And so as I think through, you know, we sit on a board with an expert in social, school, and city systems. She just got here. But every time I talk to her, she says something brilliant. And I think we should give our board an opportunity to think more long-term about how we structure our schools and how we can deliver an excellent education. And I believe that closing two school now, two schools now undermines our ability to
I'm wondering just how we're spending the evening here. My, I'm wanting to stay as open as possible to ongoing conversation. And so I have responses, but I'm also wondering if maybe I should hold those?
I'd like to hear them.
And we keep talking?
I'd like to hear them.
Because if we are gonna come back to reviewing all the scenarios, then I guess I'm seeking some direction about the nature of our conversation now.
So I think if board members have comments for five more minutes, we can entertain Because I'm sensing unsurity, if that's the word, or the, looking for the opportunity to explore more with each other in terms of coming to a consensus. And we can work on that. So I, that's my recommendation, is that, okay?
So I'll hold.
So at 7:30, we will bring this discussion to a close.
Do you love the timer, please?
Yes, and then we need to talk about when we will reconvene. So let's take it one step at a time. Any additional discussion?
You wanted to say something, Andrew? Did you want to say?
I think we're gonna go down the rabbit trail, kind of where we stand now, which I don't know what good that does us, except for, so I just think, do you want me to go? I can go, but I also feel like, I think it's more fruitful to...
Your call.
Have these conversations in ways that...
Can be more productive.
Yeah, can be more productive.
Okay. Then I will go ahead and read the motion for the approval for the commencement of the required school code public hearings to consider a one-school closure scenario of Lincolnwood Just a point of clarification. I move that the Board of Education approve holding three public hearings in accordance with Section 10-22.13 of the Illinois School Code to consider the closure of Lincolnwood Elementary School. The dates for these hearings will be determined by the superintendent and board president. The superintendent is directed to provide the required notice for these public hearings at least 10 days prior to the first public hearing by publication on the district's website. Do we have a second?
Second. Oh, sorry, I thought we were voting. Okay, take that away.
Can we call the vote?
I mean, it has to be second.
Yeah, it has to be second. Yeah.
Or do we not vote on it? Is that the other option?
Let's, let's, let's vote on it.
Okay. Second.
Pinkard?
Did we second, you seconded it?
I seconded it.
So I'm just confused. We're voting on this, but we're coming, we're trying to come back to a decision.
Hernandez?
No.
Opdick?
No.
Weimer?
No.
Wilkins?
No.
Anderson?
No.
The motion fails. Now we need to bring thought about when we're going to reconvene, to move to the recommendation to revisit the four scenarios.
We have a meeting on the 8th.
We still need the, we need 10 days' notice before we do the, so the timeline, because we're, when's the, how do we work backwards from, like, can we do dates back to back to back? Can we?
I, I, so I think what Dr. Beersley alluded to earlier, the timeline, the timeline that we presented to you all is the timeline for any enactment for the '25, '26 school year. That timeline, because you have made these votes, the timeline is, is gone at this point. If you want to come back and revisit these scenarios, essentially, what you would be coming back to revisit is potential, and, and again, you can consult with your, with the board council, is consideration for this for the '26, '27 school year. We're in the '25, '26 school year, so bringing this, but because the timeline has gone for the school closure hearings and how we have to back this up with all of the other labor timelines we have as well.
Can I ask a point of clarification? You said for the '26, '27 school year, do you mean for the '27, '28? Because we were planning on the '26, '27.
The schools would close at the end of the '26, '27 school year.
Yeah, at the end, yes, thank you.
Yes, at the end of the '26, '27 school year, to then go into effect for the '27, '28 school year.
Can someone put up the calendar, the, from the last presentation of when we were gonna have the three, the three meetings? Because I'm trying to understand the date, so if...
They were gonna be the 3rd of December was what's gonna be one hearing. The second hea, or the third hearing was gonna be the 10th, and the second hearing was the 8th. So we had the 3rd, the 8th, and the 10th.
So couldn't we do the 10th, the 9th, and the 8th? I mean, I'm trying to say, how do we, because I understand the 10 days that you have to have. If we came back here on Monday, we have 45, I'm just trying to understand the work backwards in the dates. We have to have three hearings. The last day is, we're out of here on... The last day is, we're out of here on the?
The 19th is the last day before break.
Okay. The 19th, right? We have to have three hearings. We could do the 19th, 18th, and the 17th. We might not want to, but there's three hearings, right? So how do we?
10 days' notice for a hearing?
Yes.
10 days' notice?
Mm-hmm. Right.
But, but depending on how many schools you close, you would also have to conduct three hearings for each school that you decide to close.
Right. Two on the same day. I think it's already designed that we would do. The problem was if we did to three, then you would, we wouldn't do three. So we can pick three days.
Two closings here each day.
Two closings, three days we do. If we do two schools, they're all on the same day, so I'm leaving open all options.
Just a clarification, it's 10 days, not 10 business days?
It's 10 school days.
Okay, so do, so go with 10 school days.
So can I ask, that puts us at the 19th, is that what you said, Dr. Pinkert?
I said the last, they're saying, what's our last date here? So I'm, you know, I'm trying to say, when is the last day the school's open that we can actually have the, the here, or the vote, working backwards from that?
So December 19th vote.
Right.
So that, oh.
I think what we're saying is, we want, you want to have the hearings before we go out on winter break, is that what I mean?
And the vote, all of it, all of it, all of it.
I haven't said anything.
And that's what I was going to ask, is the 19th, we've then pushed all the dates back significantly, right?
That's what, that's what Dr. Pinkert was proposing, was to push the dates.
I'm saying that we have to get to 10 days, so we have to find that, if we came in Monday, right, we could, go ahead.
The recommendation is not to hold the vote on the day of the 3rd.
Right.
So the vote would need to happen on the 19th, so three before that.
Okay. So conceivably, you could vote on the 19th, vote on the 18th, we just need three days of meetings before that. You could meet 15th, 16th, 17th. I'm not saying we should, I'm just trying to get to this point. 10 days before the 15th is December 1st, 10 working days, 10 business days is December 1st, which is when we have to be able to say to the community, we're going to have school closings, which means we have next week to have meetings to get to a consensus of what to do. Am I, is that, am I understanding that wrong?
Yeah. We just need a meeting day.
But it's Thanksgiving, so that means Monday or Tuesday is when we would have to meet. Monday preferably if we could, because we are into the Thanksgiving.
And then if, I just want to also clarify and speak on behalf of the district team, so no one on the district team is, is, we're off as well like everybody else. And so you would have to convene, open up the district office, like, like do all of the things, because no, no one would be here. I just want to just say that particular piece.
Can I ask that we?
Can we meet on the 1st?
Can you meet on the 1st and then send out on the 1st? So, so the 1st could happen. Because your first meeting could be the 15th, yeah.
I'm, I'm going to need time to check these dates. So can we determine these through OMA compliant way, like email?
I'm good on the 1st. I'm good on the 1st.
I'm good, I'll be good on the 1st. I think we have a choice but to be. And so I just got text as 10 working days.
We have to get it done.
I cannot agree that.
I think I should be okay by the 1st.
Andrew, if it's, if it's a work-related thing, would you be able to join us virtually?
It should be.
You're available?
The 1st.
Thank you.
And it might only be 10 days, right? There might not be 10 workdays, it might be 10 days, which would change the, I mean, see, and not 10 days, okay.
It's 10 days. We got it validated.
Okay.
So the plan is we will return on December 1st?
The legal counsel said 10 days is 10 calendar days.
10 calendar days. And we will reconvene to have a thorough discussion.
And vote.
And vote.
And that's 2D, 2R, 2F, 2R, 1A. And can we take 1B off, or do we, we are, we're going to know on that one?
Well, we voted no on.
Could know, and we're going to do it.
Yeah, let's, let's, let's stay the course, let's be consistent.
All right.
Let's be clear about the message.
Okay.
Do we need a motion?
Do we need a, a motion or anything to deal with, to call a meeting or anything?
No, just adjourn.
Okay. Thank you for being here, community. We understand what this process entails. I move to adjourn the meeting at 7:33. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.[1770.63][1770.63][applause]